Welcome to the public hearing October 26, 2023 of the Southampton Town Planning Board. Can we have a call to order? I mean, a roll call, please?
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Affinity is absent. The secretary is here. Board member Catalinato.
Present.
Board member Neely.
Present.
Board member Mutu and Fulham are not here, but we do have a call.
Thank you. Please join in for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, as a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So the first note of business is that item number three on the agenda, the CVS Hampton Bays, the applicant has withdrawn the application. So there'll be no public hearing and no further action on the CVS. I just assume that the movie theater will remain, which will make everybody happy. Okay, so 215 East Montauk Highway is the first on the agenda. Do we have a notice, counsel?
The board has proper notice on this matter.
Thank you. And Craig, you want to read that in to the record?
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 14 of 2022, the public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October 26, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-application entitled 215 East Montauk Highway. The application proposes a two-lot subdivision of a 40,001 square foot property situated in the R-20 zoning district, stormwater management zone, and New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area located at 215 East Montauk Highway, Hamlet of Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-207-52.11.
Thank you. Is someone here representing the application? Please come up and introduce yourselves for the record.
Yes, so I'm Maggie Veverica from North Star Engineering, and this is Sarah Churchill from North Star Engineering.
Okay, so give us a brief overview of the application.
So yes, as was stated, we're proposing a two-lot subdivision for a property that is just over 40,000 square feet. We're proposing two single-family residences for each property. The reason for a variance is even though the entire lot is 40,000 square feet, due to a lot with requirements, we had to do a front lot and a rear lot, and the rear lot requires a flag strip for access purposes. And that flag strip reduces the square footage in Lot 1, the front lot, to under 20,000 square feet, which is the requirement. So that's why we're requesting a variance. The site is undeveloped, but surrounding properties, most of them are developed, and there are a few residences south of East Montauk Highway that have similar layouts with a flag strip and similar square footages. So overall, the site would have worked, you know, 40,000 can, square feet could be two 20,000 square lots, but because of flag strip access purposes, we cannot meet that.
What is the, the square footage of the two lots?
Lot 1, which is under 20,000, is 17,236. The rear lot will be 20,128. If you include the flag strip, it's 22,766 square feet.
Okay. So you know you're in a New York State Archaeologically Sensitive Area, and you'll have to do a 1A and B review of that.
Yes.
Any questions from the board? Is there?
What about the storm management zone? I don't know exactly what that means.
Anthony knows what a storm manager.
A groundwater management zone or?
It says stormwater management zone.
On the map, or I'm sorry?
In the notice.
Stormwater management zone?
That's what Teresa listed.
Uh huh.
Is there anyone here who wants to speak to this application? Is there anyone, Kevin, on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Thank you. Okay, he can check.
Yeah.
I don't see anything, but I'll see if I can find out if there's a new one for me.
Okay, so seeing no further comments, we'll close with a 10-day written comment period. I'll take a motion for that. Craig, by Craig, second by Gloria, all in favor. Opposed, abstentions, four in favor, three absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second item is the Atlantic Golf Club. We have sufficient notice, John?
The board does have proper notice on this as well.
Yes.
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October 26, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-submission application entitled Atlantic Golf Club Employee Housing. The subject property is for the, the subject property is for the site plan, special exception wetlands permit application to construct a 6,500-square-foot building for employee housing accessory to an existing golf course on a 203,491-foot acre, 200, I'm sorry, 203.491-acre parcel located, to, located adjacent to Short Pond, located in the CRAD zoning district on the north side of Scuttle Hole Road, at 1040 Scuttle Hole Road, Hamlet of Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-49-1-7.1.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea, Mark Cincigen Bruin, Southampton, New York, on behalf of the applicant, Atlantic Golf Club, Inc. With us tonight is Scott Kloster. He is the general manager of Atlantic, and Dennis Suskind, the president, apologizes that he could not make it this evening. Also is Tony Panza, our architect, and the plans are here. There's probably more to this application. But we're here tonight, the board may remember this application. You actually approved identical, this project that we're presenting tonight is identical to the project that you approved by resolution December 16, 2021. We're here tonight because after your approval, there was a decision by the zoning board put in question whether or not golf course housing is actually accessory to a golf course, and suggested the town board take steps to legislate. And the town board did, in fact, adopt regulations establishing living quarters for golf course employees as a special exception use. And as a result, and they didn't grandfather any previous applications or approvals, and so therefore, it was the opinion of the building inspector that we need to come back to this board. And with the guidance of the staff, they also suggested we start with a pre-submission conference, and that is what we're doing tonight, pre-submission conference. I don't want to go into a lot of details, but basically, the application, we submitted a full final application that you have available as well. It's a site plan special exception and combined wetlands application, which because of the proximity to Shorts Pond. This application, as you will see, will comply to all the special exception standards. That's not something you have to actually determine at the pre-submission stage, but you'll see that we were able to comply with all the standards the town board adopted. What I'd like to do at this point, though, is ask Tony Panza to give you a brief overview, so you can recall exactly what the project is.
Thank you.
Just some other elements. If you recall, this board, when they originally approved the Atlantic Golf Club, had asked for and received a trail easement that runs along the northerly boundary of the entire golf course. However, it ended at the shoreline of Shorts Pond, which existed back in 1991, because there was no way to get through or physically get through with the trail. Since then, the water levels reduced, and in your review, previous review, you asked, and Atlantic was willing to provide an extension of that existing trail easement, which was entirely on our property to get out to Scuttle Hole Road. So that's still an element of this plan. The other element was, given this was an agricultural field open, there was a view shed to Shorts Pond, and we were asked and we provided a view shed easement, and that's still an element of this project. A couple of things have changed, though, and as you know, our neighbor, there are certain neighbors that were not supportive of this project. They actually instituted lawsuits suing this board and your approval. I'd just like to point out, the immediate neighbors to the west, north and west, formerly the lots in the Shorts Pond Associates subdivision, the Held family. They own four lots. They were the objectors previously. Since your approval, they have sold all four lots. Two of the lots went to a builder who built two houses that are about twice the size of this, and they continued the hedge, evergreen hedge along the street. The other two lots, which are immediately bought, were sold to the town this August as open space. So the only remaining objector or objectors were Mary Ann Gabrielle, which is the single-family dwelling to the north. This board asked us to provide screening, and in fact, Atlantic has already planted that screening along there. It certainly is something we can all look at, and if it needs augmentation, that's something available. The other two objectors were lots further north. In fact, a vacant lot and a house lot that are further north of the two lots that the Helds actually owned and the two houses that were built. So we're here to hear any comments they have, but I'll ask Tony now to give you a little overview of the project.
Is it okay if I come to the table and lay some out?
Sure, just identify yourself, Tony.
Sorry. Tony Panza, architect for the Atlantic Golf Club, Rogers Macag, Architects.
Yeah, come up.
The drawings over there are a little bit folded up, and I have more here, so I think I'll be easier to.
Those coffee beans. You can have one.
We highly recommend.
Espresso with dark chocolate.
They keep us awake.
So there's a couple of drawings that are in the sets. One of them, I'm going to just point out now, and then I'll move it to the back. Wayne had mentioned that in the previous submission, we had talked about a trail easement.
Yeah.
So there's actually three items that we talked about for an easement. We talked about a trail easement, which is drawn in here. And as Wayne was mentioning, this easement was kind of very specific because Shorts Pond has, it does encroach into this area, so access is a little bit difficult. Was a little bit difficult because of this property line that was here. So a decision, I think, of the planning board is that this now, these two lots, as Wayne mentioned, are no longer owned by private citizens. They were CPF. So this does no longer has to be. It can be reconfigured.
Yeah, because the Trails Board would probably want, would want to use the CPF land.
So this would be something that the Trails Board had requested previously?
Yeah, and they, they should be reviewing this application now.
So the reason for this was that when Atlantic had, which originally received planning board approval 30 years ago, there's, there's an easement that runs along, you can see in this part of the, of the map here. That was the existing easement. It had to stop because of Shorts Pond extended all the way out to there and was never able to continue. So when we came back with this project and Shorts Pond had receded, there was a discussion about, can this continue? So we, and there was significant amount of work done on that. We went out with the Trails Committee, we walked it, and GPS did, and things like that, but this corner was a very difficult one to work around. This sheet also has an easement on there about the, the view corridor. We'll run through that, and it also.
So you'll reconfigure this trail now to go through CPF?
I would defer to the Trails Advisory Board, but, and they will see this as part of the application.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we can provide and have the flexibility. I think, as Gloria mentioned, physically, you know, you, you have more flexibility now. They can locate it and may meander, you know, on our property and over to their, to the town properties.
I think it would, it would be lovely to be able to, it's kind of cool coming off of Guyer and doing the walk, but if you could actually get down to the pond and at least view it, that would be an asset to the trail.
And this also was for the neighbors.
Yes.
It was a point of, they were not happy about.
That was the property line, exactly. And now the view shed easement?
We'll go over that in a large drawing, but that is on here. This drawing was, was created strictly an easement drawing, and it also had a buffer that was requested by the environmental to go around the pond. So there's no change in that. That was created. I just wanted to run, run through that one. I'll go over to the, to the view shed for a moment. If you're familiar with Scuttle Hole Road, you know, the interesting thing about it is that it was farm fields on both sides. Luckily, the field that's on the opposite side has pretty much remained open, except for on the north side, I believe. As all the houses went in on Scuttle Hole Road, the green giants went up, so there's kind of this wall on that side. And one of the first things that we brought up when we brought this application was, this was our suggestion, that we allow that to continue. And so we still wanted to be able to plant, so that, just like with the other buildings, that there's, it's not visually right, you know, right seen from the road. It's a little bit different of a planting plan. It's not a wall of green giants. It's one of those that Marty would appreciate. It's got some diversity in it, some height, you know, here and there. But there's, this yellow is the view shed easement, which is reflected over there. This has been staked out. The one thing about it, when you are driving in, you know, this is where the opening is in the current pond. We can't regulate what happens over here, anything inside of, you know, the conservation district. We're not allowed to cut any trees or anything like that, so.
Stuff grows. It's not your fault.
Yeah, and, and also, just in case, you know, people frequent Scuttle Hole Road, just wanted to point out, there was a point in the fall when someone, turned out to be the town highway department, went in and decided to clear 10 or 15 feet all the way along Scuttle Hole, all the way around. Just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that wasn't Atlantic. That was the highway department. They felt it was okay. They can go in and cut things out, but we're not allowed to do that.
Not the first place.
So to the, to the site plan, there's the front yard setback, side yard setback. We have a driveway coming in. We are, we did ask, and this was part of discussions with conservation, to, to not asphalt all of the spots that required. So we have six of them that are land banked. We have permeable surface where we're able to park. We do have asphalt on the main drive coming into the parking area for the ADA. That's kind of one thing we can't get away from. And otherwise, there's very little, and I'll go to the landscape pan, there's very little happening out. For those of you that were on the board, remember that there's also, the field is here, and the idea is that that fescue would continue to grow. Atlantic, over the years, has treated it as a field, and they've mowed it generally twice a year. Again, with our prior approval, the conservation department did ask that we reduce that to once. And, and there's also, we put in some list of explanation that the conservation wanted as to what we would do in this area. And it's just because it's just supposed to remain fescue. So they will allow the fescue to be cut, but then everything else, like I said, this side of the view shed and back over here, anything close to the pond, we leave it. There is a, another item that we did discuss previously, and that conservation was okay with, which is there's a, an old path that comes around Shorts Pond from the potato barn and further around. Since this is staff housing, we wanted to be able to continue to mow that path through. And so we just wanted to make sure we had that on there. Marty was okay with us doing that. It is through the fescue field, but since we're trying to make, you know, a path so that no one has to go back out to Scuttle Hole Road and they can get off to.
It's a walking path?
Yeah. There might be a golf cart on it now and again. This over here, this is an old tractor path, so it's a bit wider, but it would just be.
Is it got a surface on it, stone or anything?
Just dirt.
Just dirt. Yeah, earthen, I guess we could say, but it's no stone or anything like that. Other items from the site plan, it's an IA system, and there's really nothing else that's happening on the outside of it. Geothermal, closed-loop geothermal is also noted on the site plan for this building. This is the IA system we're connecting for water, gas, and electric from the street. We have our drainage, the project, again, since it's already been through, we have sign off, we had sign off from the town engineer, that we met everything that they had asked for.
Did we talk about solar?
You were stealing things from me. When I get to the elevation, yeah, the solar is, is shown on the, on the roof.
You knew that was coming.
Well, you know, it's, it's south facing.
Is there a hydrant out there?
There's a hydrant right across.
Across, okay.
Yeah, I think it should be, it's on the other prop, but it's right here.
Okay, good.
You got it right here. Just checking on the aerial.
Oh, yeah.
It's right there.
So we did note, because of ARB, that there would be solar panels on the structure itself. It's a cedar shingle structure, very much like the, the older farmhouse, which is to the south side of Shorts Pond, which we looked at very briefly a few months ago when we were talking about the turf barn, which is located just to the west of that. So intended to be, you know, very residential in look, in, in its look and how it relates to neighborhood. There are some foundation plantings, but not much. And in terms of the plans, there's, there's, when the project was started, this was COVID. So it was, how do we get privacy and safety for everyone? Current living situation for a lot of staff housing is two or three people in a room, and then a shared bathroom for, it could be for six or eight. So this was, everyone gets their own, their own bathroom, you know, trying to raise the standard. There is a, you know, a kitchen area, kitchen, kitchen area that they can use. And there's also two rooms, which are, we're calling them en suite. It just means that they have, they have an ante room for them. So rather than, it's meant for a higher level of management, not all staff is just, you know, the, what do you, let's say hourly, so someone that has a higher level, maybe been there for a little bit longer.
And how many staff would be housed there? Remind me, please?
16.
That hasn't changed, right?
That hasn't changed. As Wayne had mentioned, the, in terms of the plans, the only thing that has changed in any of these drawings is that we had to do a new survey because these trees over here, which were originally proposed to hide the building from the neighbor, we went and planted them. So we took them, took them off the proposed, and we put them on the existing. There, there, we had proposed them as a continuous line, and you'll notice on the, on the site plan, there's a little bit of a break that has to happen. It's right in here, and it's because there's a quite large Russian olive that the base of the tree is on the neighbor's property, and it comes over. So we would certainly be glad to, if they're okay with it, take that out, and then we can continue across. That way, it wouldn't be a deciduous tree that was there. And, and of course.
I happen to think they're beautiful, but they're not native.
Well, yeah, there, and that's, sorry, there was one other change. There was a Russian olive right over here, and that was one of the items on Marty's list to remove it. But as much as we would have.
What did you plant?
Here.
Yeah.
The green giant arborvitus. And that was to match what the neighbor had placed there. So we would have no problem cutting that down and planting across there.
On the rooms, you said they're now individual rooms with individual bathrooms?
That wasn't a change. That's, that's the original.
I wasn't here for your original application in '21, so I would just.
I was, that's why I was mentioning this, this came about through COVID, and when everyone kind of, with the common bathrooms, it was a problem.
Right, right.
So if there were another COVID, everyone would be fine in here, because they have their own room. No more common rooms, no more common bathrooms. There is a, I shouldn't say, there is a common space. But you would close the door, no one would go into there.
Was there any thought of reducing the building because you're not building for COVID?
No, we think that it, you know, this is a 210-square-foot room. The, we can go down to, I think, 140 square feet based upon Suffolk County per person. It's a 10 by 14 room.
It's pretty small.
Yeah.
Kind of like a room on a ship.
215, 216 square feet, that's.
Is there any room for storage? I have some friends that live in the Spionc apartments, the Workworth housing apartments. Every once in a while, we get together and say, how is it, how is it? And their wish list is always some, some storage, specifically for bicycles.
There's a covered area in the back. It's very small, but we actually have drawn bike racks there. And then, we didn't finish the entire lower level, because we went crawl space on some of it, but the other side of it, yes, could certainly be storage.
Storage. I think that's smart.
Yeah.
And these are seasonal? Again, I think I'm going back to probably what you discussed, you know, a couple of years ago, but just.
The, they, it's a year-round building.
Okay.
Where staff ends up, because there is some year-round staff.
Right, right.
And there is other spaces on the property that, it hasn't been decided as to, maybe there'll be two that might remain here, just so that it can be, remain, you know, occupied.
Yes.
But for the most part, generally seasonal. The golf course does close. So, but there are staff that, that do work year-round. The golf course is maintained year-round. Scott is always in his office year-round, as well as accounting staff and others.
Other than the kitchen areas, are there any kind of big common area or anything like that for, for the staff? Or is it just kind of the kitchen areas, the common area?
Well, this has a seating area in it. It has, you know, a table and seating area, so that's. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Tony.
Just one other comment. So we presented previously, and the board may remember the history, when Atlantic was originally approved, there were three dwellings on the property, and the planning board and the Suffolk County Planning Commission insisted that those dwellings remain available for staff. And that was the beginning of staff housing on this property. And thereafter, this board proved three different expansions, modifications of existing buildings that were all in that cluster of farm buildings that were there. And basically, there is no other available space or otherwise to, to put any more space. And so there is approximately 22 employee already accommodated on the property, and this board has approved three other times as well. And one of those actually involved the zoning board, which was odd because they had granted variances to allow us to have dormers on the one building to allow the extra housing. So there is a history of housing here, so we have approximately 22. This building will accommodate 16, so we'll have 38. The new standards go up to 50. So there's still a possibility, and just for the record again, Atlantic has anywhere between 100 to 120.
Atlantic has anywhere between a hundred to a hundred and twenty employees at its peak period during the season, and we're only accommodating thirty-eight of those ultimately. So there, there still will continue people commuting to the property and, and so on. So, and I think when we were at the town board public hearing, you know, it was interesting. They were considering at the same time the whole housing plan for the C P F program now. And they were recognizing that here you have a private entity building affordable housing to accommodate their workforce at no cost to the taxpayers or otherwise. And, and, and the other part was getting those employees off the road. So we appreciate all the board, what you've done in the past, and we hope that you could provide us with any comments on this current application going forward.
Good. Thank you, Wayne. There's no one here in the room. Is there anyone on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, no more questions from the board. We'll see, this is a pre-application, so we'll close with a thirty-day written comment period. Motion by Craig, second by Gloria, all in favor. Posed abstentions, four in favor, three absent. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Craig, Tom, all in favor. Posed abstentions, four in favor, three absent. We are adjourned.